Okay, the City of Marine City Commission meeting is called to order on Thursday, October 5th, 2023 at 7 o'clock PM. We have a moment of silence to send our positive thoughts and prayers to those in our community that need our support. You know, please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, can I get roll call, please?
Mr. Bryson.
Here.
Mr. Hendrick.
Here.
Mr. Hillfrank. Mr. Clausen.
Here.
Mr. Rourke.
Here.
Mr. Ross.
Here.
Mayor Vandabush.
Here.
City Manager Atkins.
Here.
And can I have a motion to excuse Commissioner Hillfrank?
So moved.
Motion, any support? Your support?
He's here now.
Oh, he's here now? Okay.
Nope, we don't have to do it.
Okay. Moving on to item four, the approval of the agenda, can I have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Support.
Okay, motion and support, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It carries. Item five, presentations, proclamations, and recognitions, we have none. Now we're on to six, public comment. Anyone who's welcome to address the City Commission, please state your name. Limit your comments to five minutes. The Commission will not respond, but we will follow up as necessary. Would you like to speak? Moran?
Good evening, Madam Mayor, I'm Gillian Moran. No others will speak to this. As the meeting progresses, but as Chairman of the Planning Commission, I want to extend an invitation to Marine City residents, business owners, and other interested parties to attend the Marine City Master Plan and Recreation Plan Open House in this chamber next Tuesday between the hours of 4:00 and 8:00 PM. There'll be opportunities to record your thoughts on whiteboards, on poster cards, and there will be roundtable discussions relative to master plan goals, to the parks, to aging in place, economic growth, and whatever other topics you'd like to bring to our attention. You'll also have an opportunity to complete the master plan survey onsite if you haven't already done so. You need not come at 4:00, and you don't have to stay to 8:00. It's an open meeting between those two hours. Come for 20 minutes, drop off a couple of ideas, or stay for two hours, whatever makes you happy. Participate in some or all of the discussions. There are no rules or regulations, we just want your input, however you may choose to give it. Folks, these plans are what drives Marine City. Everything that we do is based on the goals and the action plans that we set forth in those two plans. If you have a pet project that you'd like to bring to fruition here in Marine City, unless it's addressed somehow in the master plan, we cannot address it. So if you want a water park, for example, make sure that that is covered somewhere in the master plan. A good example is for years, we tried to get traction for a marina in the city. We couldn't get any grants, and we couldn't get any, like, county or state interest because it wasn't covered in the master plan. As soon as we addressed that, bingo, we had opportunities to bring in money, and we have had some substantial grants received for our marina project. So it's an important thing for the city. Our ability to secure new residents, to secure new businesses, and again, to secure grants, depends a lot on what's in that plan. So I hope to see you there. I understand, Rosalie, you're contributing some goodies for the good of the cause. God bless you. Come have a doughnut on Rosalie. So thank you very much, hope to see you there. Thank you.
The date again?
Pardon me?
The date again?
It is October 10th, next Tuesday, between 4:00 and 8:00 PM.
Thank you. Anybody else wish to address the Commission?
My name's Chris Minor, from St. Clair, but I just want to give a little outside perspective from the city, mainly with how everything is handled officially in these meetings. We really need you guys, and your citizens need you guys, to figure out a way to work together. I mean, we all have those people at work that, man, I can't stand that person, I can't stand that person. At the end of the day, though, you gotta work with them to accomplish whatever the general manager wants, whatever the plant manager, whatever the customer wants. All of your customers are the City of Marine City residents. So you have it to them, they all picked you guys to work with each other. If you don't like this guy, then you know what? Just figure out a way. Because just sitting up here bickering all the time, and this and that, and these two don't like these two, and these two, it doesn't matter. You need to get done what your city wants you to get done, instead of arguing with each other all the time. Another thing I've seen in the meetings, Mr. Attorney, you are not a Commissioner. Your job is to advise on what's legal, not legal, if they want to do something that's illegal, or whatever the law is. You are to advise on that, not, oh, I think this, and acting around like a regular Commissioner. You are the Attorney. Also, I think as a city, you guys should have an independent counsel representing you. You have a direct tie with the mayor's husband in a business proposition on 26 Mile Road and all that entails with that. That no longer makes you an independent counsel. So your decisions on anything regarding that, or really a lot of the other business, of course you're gonna side with what your business, what you're gonna profit off of versus what is best for the city. And, you know, especially anything, once again, I like you, Jennifer, don't really care for your husband, but you're tied to him, you're married to him, you are tied to that project. So, that's my big thing is, you know, you guys have to learn to work with each other. I know a lot of you, we're not gonna shoot the whatever, you guys don't like Mike. Mike is just trying to ask questions. He was brought here for transparency, not, hey, have you talked to this person? Well, I don't know, I don't know, I don't know. Now you gotta ask this person, this person, this person, this person, this person, just yes or no, did you talk to him or not? Sorry to speak up, I'm a little agitated, but it's just ridiculous. And as somebody who owns a business, do I want to bring a business, because I am looking at places to bring my shop? Do I want to bring it to Marine City? Now with the last council, now what I've seen up here, it's just, it's ridiculous, guys, it really is, from outside eyes. And I guess I probably have another minute or so. You know, this marijuana thing, I understand, you know, the older people don't want it, most of the younger people do. It's basically a really good tax incentive, it's no more dangerous than the alcohol that's out there. If you want, oh, I don't want a dispensary, then let's stop all alcohol sales. I mean, come on, we all grew up with beer in our parents' fridge, we all grew up with liquor cabinets. Did we go in there? No, because mom or dad would put us in big trouble. Well, especially marijuana being more expensive, kids aren't gonna get to that stuff, and if they do, that's a parent issue, that's not a city issue to deal with. So, that's said my piece.
Thank you. Anybody else like to address the Commission?
Rudy Machaka, 315 Westminster. First of all, I'd like to extend an apology to Commissioner Lisa for calling you out in the last meeting, and Commissioner Bryson. You know, to most folks watching at home, don't know that after I make a presentation, most of the time, I'm gone, I leave. And I go home, and a day or two later, I'll watch the entire meeting in the comfort of my own home. This last meeting was no different. And when I saw, what I saw Mike do, I just, I couldn't believe it. I almost fell out of my chair. I kept telling myself, this ain't really happening, that's not really going on, Mike. Behavior is just intolerant, lack of self-control, a total disregard for the rule of law. I mean, in this meeting, there are rules that govern this meeting, disrespect for authority. The mayor is, like her or not, she's the boss, she's the chairperson, she's the one that facilitates the meeting, constantly and consistently interrupting others when asked to stop. To the Commission, I realize now that you're caught between a rock and a hard place. I don't know what you're gonna do. I stated my viewpoint, but certainly this cannot continue the way it's been. The downside of it is, I think, Mike, you'd have been a good advocate, but the way you present yourself and the things that you do, you just, you fail every direction, you fail that, I mean, you become oppositional, defiant, resistant, all those things, and, I mean, I just don't know. It's sad, because I think you probably would have made a very good advocate, because there are people that come here and look for you. I mean, people, all them people out there that voted for you can't be wrong, but, you know, there's just a way, a certain way that business is conducted in here, and it has to be that way. You know, you quoted Rita one time, well, I know Rita well, and she knows me, and many times we've spoke, but she didn't do the things that you did, the way you do them. She's a sharp lady, I learned a lot from her. But you can't, you know, you're not gonna move these people doing the things that you're doing, so, folks, thanks for hearing me out.
Thank you. Anybody else like to address the Commission?
Good evening. My name's Catherine Warner, I live on South Main Street in Marine City. I'm requesting that this body consider and approve stop signs for some of the intersections on South Main Street, between Broadway and Bridge Street, perhaps at the cross streets of Jefferson and East St. Clair and Marine. This would have at least two benefits, slow traffic on South Main Street, which is posted 25 miles an hour, but on which vehicles routinely drive 40-plus, and divert traffic down Broadway and South Parker, where several businesses are located, including antique stores, The Dairy Queen, The Corner Grocery, Marine City Grill, Pepe's, Wanton Palace, whatever might go into the old food depot where Andy's was, a car wash, two gas stations, and others. It's clear from the traffic I see that many vehicles traveling on South Main are just passing through, no doubt, the ones going at a high rate of speed. They go, they go that way because it's the shortest and straightest distance between North Main and Broadway and South Parker and Charter, by about four tenths of a mile, although time-wise, the routes are the same, according to the Google Maps. Drivers also avoid one traffic light at South Parker and West Boulevard. I don't necessarily mind the volume of traffic on South Main, but the speed of a lot of the vehicles is ridiculous, and it's a danger to the kids who live on that street, and the many pedestrians who cross to get downtown. Let's face it, a lot of people are flying down South Main, are using that route to get through town, not to it. People pulling boats or campers don't stop in Marine City if they're driving south or down South Main, but they might if they're on Broadway or South Parker. So installing stop signs at South Main would decrease speeds on the roads, thus protecting our citizens, particularly the children, and likely prompt some drivers to use Broadway, South Parker, M29 instead, and potentially increase customers for businesses on that route. Additionally, diverting some traffic off South Main Street would lessen wear and tear on the bridge over Bell River, while that would increase traffic over the bridge on the north side of town as part of M29, I'm guessing that that is maintained by MDOT. As for the cost for buying and installing signs, those would be a minimal. At the upper end, the sign is about $250. Installation might be 500 per sign, according to estimates I researched. If, as suggested, the Commission agrees to install stop signs at three intersections on South Main, that's six signs, the cost would be around $4,500. Please consider this request for the safety of our citizens and for the benefit of our business on Broadway and on South Parker. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Rosalie?
Rosalie Squires, 211 Michigan. You know, one time, I came to a meeting, Lisa can remember this, where Commissioners ended up recalled, gave a 45-minute book report on Ben Franklin, I kid you not. Like all of us don't know something about Ben Franklin? Couldn't believe it, 45 minutes. But I hate to talk about books here, but I'm gonna talk about books a little bit. There's a book called The Five Love Languages, it's influenced my life a lot, and it's about, everybody has a love language, and, like, let's say maybe your love language is, you want your spouse, or your mate, or your significant other to spend time with you. If instead, they're bringing you gifts all the time, your love language isn't filled. This book has been around since the 70s, and it's a really good book. Later on, much later, in 2006, a book was written called The Five Love Languages of Apologies. And, you know, for some people to say, to hear, you know, "I'm sorry" is enough, but for some people, that's not enough, because they have a different apology language. With that, I want to say this. I think that, our city clerk was really picked on at the last meeting, and I apologize on behalf of the city forum, and I want to give you the book on the love languages, the men's edition. It helped me a lot, so maybe it'll help you. Last book I want to talk about is The Attracting of Native Pollinators. And I tried doing that as much as I could when I worked in the yard here, and it's really been two years, because the stuff in front of the guy's center, a lot of that's come from my home. And I want to say, there's a plant out there that came from Poland, at least the mother plant, came from Poland about 130 years ago, it's the sedum, it's the smaller growing sedum. So I think that's kind of cool. And some of the stuff, I started from seed, like, 30-some years ago, and it just keeps growing and growing and growing, that's the black-eyed Susans. And this year, they really looked good, because they're two years old. So I'm kind of proud of that. I liked what I did out there, I wanted to do more, but I did fall and break my femur in three places, and it rained a lot this year, so I didn't get everything accomplished, because I wanted to do more around the music stand at the library, I don't know if anybody even knows it's there, but it's really cool. And I wanted to put some more stuff out there, but I didn't get that far. But hey, it's still not cold, that cold yet, maybe I'll do some more, and maybe I'll be able to plant, I did order some tulips, and I did everything local, everything I bought was within about a 10-mile radius that I bought and put out here. And I think we should support our local economy. Also, I don't agree, businesspeople should be on our board. And I think you should have an opinion, and I don't think you have an interest of your own, I don't agree with that at all. And saying that old people don't want pot, well, like I've said it before, I'm 68-years-old, and in the 60s and 70s were a lot of, there was a lot of pot, a lot of pot, especially the school I went to in Detroit. So if we have an opinion about pot, that's my First Amendment rights, I can have my opinion about pot. And that's all I can have to say about it. And for everybody that's coming to the meeting on Tuesday, I will have, like, granola bars and some healthy snacks, and some cider, and some coffee, and some lemonade. So if you want to come right from work, at least you can grab a granola bar and still participate in our master plan, because it is very, very important. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Anybody else like to address the Commission? Anybody else? Hey, anybody else? Okay. Moving on to item seven, approval of the minutes. Can I have a motion to approve the City Commission meeting minutes of September 21st, 2023?
So moved.
Support.
Motion and support, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carries. And can I have a motion to approve the City Commission closed session meeting minutes of September 21st, 2023?
So moved.
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carries. On the consent agenda, we have item 8A, the 300 Broadway meeting minutes of August 28th, 2023, item 8B, the Community and Economic Development meeting minutes of August 23rd, 2023, and the Halloween trick-or-treating hours for Tuesday, October 31st, 2023, from 5:00 PM to 8:00 PM. I have a motion to approve the consent agenda, items A through C as presented.
Make a motion, we approve the consent agenda, items A through C as presented.
Support.
Motion and the support, any discussion?
I don't think there's discussion on consent.
Oh, right, and roll call, please.
Mr. Bryson.
Yes.
Mr. Hendrick.
Yes.
Mr. Hillfrank.
Yes.
Mr. Clausen.
Yes.
Mr. Rourke.
Yes.
Mr. Ross.
Yes.
Mayor Vandabush.
Yes.
Motion carried.
Okay, on to nine, items removed from consent agenda, we have none. Onto 10A, expenditures in financial business, we have expenditures, including payroll, of $343,551.50. Can I have a motion to approve the expenditures, including payroll, in that amount of $343,551.50?
I'll make a motion, we approve the expenditures, including payroll, for $343,551.50.
Support.
Okay, the motion and the support, any discussion?
Nice to see the expenditures come back down.
All right, no other discussion, then roll call vote, please.
Mr. Hendrick.
Yes.
Mr. Hillfrank.
Yes.
Mr. Clausen.
Yes.
Mr. Rourke.
Yes.
Mr. Ross.
Yes.
Mayor Vandabush.
Yes.
Mr. Bryson.
Yes.
Motion carried.
Okay, on to financial business, B, the preliminary financial statements. Can I have a motion to receive and file the preliminary financial statements?
So moved.
Support.
Okay, the motion and the support, any discussion?
I just have a question. What is the payroll clearing fund? It's not much, but I just want to know what one is, that's all.
The small $200 piece, $19. So we have a couple of different funds for payroll. That's usually one, that's not our main payroll fund, our main payroll fund is a transfer fund, so this is kind of a catch-all for certain other items that are the non-incidental secondary items.
Okay, that makes sense.
All right, any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Carries. And now we're on to 10C, the Resolution 24, 2023, for the Fifth Third Bank signature changes. And can I have a motion to approve the Resolution 24, 2023, authorizing necessary signature and account authorizations as required by Fifth Third as presented?
I'll make a motion, we approve Resolution number 024-2023, the Fifth Third Bank signature changes.
Support.
Signatures changing to or from.
Sir, we're not, have a discussion on that right now. No, there's no discussion on that. There's no discussion on that, sir, with the audience right now.
It's in there.
Yeah, it's in the packet, it's in the agenda packet to review.
I don't get a package.
Okay.
What?
It's online.
I don't have a computer.
Okay. All right, so now, do we have the motion to approve the resolution?
Commissioner Bryson made the motion.
All right, and support?
And support was done by Commissioner Clausen.
And then, any other further discussion? Your roll call vote, please.
Mr. Hillfrank.
Yes.
Mr. Clausen.
Yes.
Mr. Rourke.
Yes.
Mr. Ross.
Yes.
Mayor Vandabush.
Yes.
Mr. Bryson.
Yes.
Mr. Hendrick.
Yes.
Motion carried.
Okay, and now we're on to 10D, the updated investment policy. Can you speak on that?
Madam Mayor, yes, if I may, for Commissioners and for the public, we have had a longstanding investment policy, which is required by Public Act 20 of the State of Michigan. The last significant update was 1998, we had a minor update in 2015. However, last year, in 2022, the state legislature made some changes to PA 20, and this new policy just reflects those changes, so we are concurring with the state statute. So, very minor, it just clarifies some investments, where we are allowed as a municipality to make investments, and that was clarified in the state statute, so this just matches the statute, brings us up current.
Okay. You're gonna need the motion to approve that one, then?
Yes, please.
And then a roll call, or?
It should probably be a roll call, yes.
Okay. And the motion?
Can we discuss after the motion? Sure, okay. I make a motion that we approve the City of Marine City investment policy.
Support.
Motion and support, and discussion.
Sorry, I just found, and apologies for not reviewing this sooner and sending it to you. If you look on the third page, 7.0 Authorized Financial Brokers, Dealers, and Institutions, says councils shall approve any arid, all financial institutions and/or broker-dealers. I believe it should be "and," I'm not entirely sure, but...
Correct.
Arid would be either dry or unimportant. In 8.0B, I think it's just like a hair got on the copier or something, but, and certificates of deposit, savings accounts, deposit accounts, or depository receipts of A, and it looks like it, almost like an F is there, but I think it's just a hair or something.
It is a frustrating formatting issue that we could not get deleted.
Oh, really?
Yeah, everything we've tried, we, I guess we'll call that inerrant A, behind there, but, I guess, tried to clean it up, but we could not get it deleted, and I'll make the other correction, as indicated in 7.0.
No problem, and then, just want to make sure Curtis is aware of this and agrees.
Yes, correct.
Thank you very much. Those are all of my questions.
Anything else? Okay, roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Clausen.
Yes.
Mr. Rourke.
Yes.
Mr. Ross.
Yes, as amended.
Mayor Vandabush.
Yes.
Mr. Bryson.
Yes.
Mr. Hendrick.
Yes.
Mr. Hillfrank.
Yes.
Motion carried.
Okay, on to item 11A, unfinished business, Resolution 23, 2023, resolution of charges under Charter Section 5.4. Could I have?
I'll make a motion, we approve Resolution number 023-2023, resolution of charges under Charter Section 5.4. In addition, if approved, I would also like to add that the City Commission schedule the hearing under Charter Section 5.4 immediately thereafter.
Support.
Okay, the motion and the support, and any further discussion?
Yeah, I have a question for charge number six here, that, what exactly are the orders that I gave the police chief? Does anybody know?
Do we just?
I believe those would be discussed at the hearing itself.
Yeah.
This is the point of information, that I'm asking what this actually means. I'm just asking for clarification, if anybody here actually knows what those orders were that I gave to, I mean, Jake introduced this thing, and somebody wrote it up, so obviously somebody has to know what the orders were, right? I just, for my own point of information, I'd like to know.
I believe that that is part of the hearing, that'll be discussed in detail.
Right, but nobody knows? I'm asking for a point of information, what those orders were, I mean, all the rest of the charters are, you know, the various gaveling and out of order, and, you know, the first one with the whole school property that doesn't even match the charter, but the last one, I'm totally confused by which orders, but I guess nobody actually knows? I mean, I'm asking for a point of information, for information that we have in I mean, I'm asking for a point of information, for information that we have in a resolution, a resolution in front of us.
Leave, to my knowledge, that's what is going to start the hearing.
Right, but this is a resolution that we're, we're passing tonight, right? So, as a point of information, I'd like to know what charge number six is referring to.
I'll even make a comment, I do, I know that there was something here, I do not know what is, that's what we're gonna wait for when we hear it from the chief himself.
So this was drawn up without even knowing what the charge was?
I believe the contention was that there, there is a charge of you giving orders to the chief, and that's what's stated here, and those specifics will be presented at the hearing. And then you would have an opportunity, per Charter 5.4, as I understand it, and Mr. Davis of Ramon, correct me, to refute and ask questions.
It's my understanding-
Specific charge.
Apologies, there are-
You can cross-examine the chief.
I, uh, it's my understanding that these charges are to be presented to me, and I'm supposed to understand what the actual charges are before the hearing, so I can prepare my defense, so how can I do that without not even knowing what the actual charge is?
You were being charged with giving orders to the police chief on August 7th concerning the deployment of police resources and how that deployment should be managed.
Right, but specifically, what were those orders? Is what I can't defend myself in this hearing without knowing what those orders were.
The chief provided testimony at that hearing to more specifics, this is his charge.
No, I understand, do you understand how, like, I have to be able to prepare for this, right? So I should be able to prepare for this hearing, and I can't prepare when I don't even know what the actual orders were that I'm being accused of. So to say that I have to wait till my hearing date to address those charges, when I'm supposed to have 10 days to consider the charges, consider my defense to those charges, I mean, it would only make sense to know what they actually are.
I'm just reading it to you guys, it's here, that, that's-
No, I understand, I mean, Jim, can you maybe offer some clarification, anybody? I mean, I gotta be able to know what I'm being accused of.
Specifically asking Commissioner what these allegations are, review your text messages.
What's that?
Review your text messages, is the question, do you second, I don't know about that date.
I, I don't have them. I broke that phone, unfortunately. Okay, so, well, that's what I need to, I need to know what the actual charge is, I mean, these are very vague, very vague charges, and need to know what, what was, what order I gave you. That's, that's really what should be listed here, is what the actual order I gave you, instead of just, I mean, how am I supposed to prepare a defense when I don't even know what the order was?
Yes? You can speak, Jim.
This was regarding the maritime days and my deployment of officers in, in Gorts Bar. You questioned why they were in there so many times?
So I questioned?
You claim you inquired.
Well, that, I mean, you just, you had just said, "I questioned," but this says, "I ordered." Huh?
You sent me a text message, and I'll forward back to you if you want me to.
No, I mean, you can, you can go ahead and read the whole thing, that's, that's what I want to know, I want to know specifically what the, what the order was, so I, so I can then know what-
You sent me a screenshot, Mike, in regards to the police being at Gorts Bar probably five times in the 12-hour period over the weekend, and it seemed excessive. You sent me that screenshot, who sent you that, I have no idea. And then, you proceeded to ask me a question, is there some excessive violations at Gorts that I am not aware of? Because I inquired with Newport Pub, and they haven't gone through this experience of having police in there five times in one day, and asking to see the liquor license over and over on multiple days within a short time period, like what the officers are doing at Gorts Bar. I didn't respond to you, because this was Sunday, when I was trying to spend time with my family. Monday, August 7th, this is now my second attempt at inquiring about the above questions, and I would appreciate you getting back to me when you have a chance, thanks, Jim.
That's it?
That's it.
That's just inquiry and questions? That's all I heard, I didn't hear, did you guys hear any orders? I didn't hear any orders.
This is now my second attempt at inquiry.
Yeah, inquiry, that's not an order, though, right? An inquiry.
You have no authority to ask me these questions, Mike.
I don't have, but this says, this says, "I gave orders to you."
Okay, this isn't the hearing.
This, this, "I gave orders to you," and those were simply inquiries and questions, which I'm allowed to do by the charter, so this is, this is what I'm saying. This is why I wanted the clarification in the first place, because there was no order at all. He just read the text message, there was no order, those were questions and inquiries.
Madam Mayor, this isn't the time for this discussion.
I, I think, I think that's-
It isn't the time for this discussion, that's why you have a hearing scheduled.
Prepare my defense, Bob, come on, how can I prepare my defense in these charges if I don't even know what the actual evidence against me is?
Mike, the charges are in writing, and the police chief just gave you his version, you can challenge these at the hearing.
Yeah.
I think you know what the challenge is.
Okay, so yes, he just told me, you're right, he just told me, and none of those things were orders, just for the public's benefit, there was no order in anything in that text message that he just read, there were inquiries and questions about concerns, various, about various issues with the bars in town, yeah, I had questions, but those aren't orders. Those aren't orders, so this isn't, this isn't properly written. This is, this whole charge number six is not proper. Just, just by his own, by his own admission, right there, he read the text messages, there was not one single order in that text message. They were simply questions and inquiries.
I guess, having been through this process once before, I didn't get most of my information until the night of the meeting.
Okay, that's, I mean, that's not how it should work, you have 10 days to prepare your defense, that's how it's supposed to work, so-
I understand, but-
I mean, to, to say that as some kind of analogy, when you-
I get the same type of thing.
At the time said it was improper, and, and here, see, I'm being, I'm being interrupted, just, just for the public's benefit. To, to say that you thought it was improper to only get it the night before in your hearing, and use that as some kind of validation for now, that seems pretty improper. Along with the, it's improper that he just read the text messages, and there was no single order. But, this is all just for the public's benefit, and the whole witch hunt, this whole thing is.
Anybody else?
We should call the vote.
You want to call the vote?
Call the vote, yes.
Will I be, I have a question, actually.
He's called the vote.
I have a question, point of information.
No, he's called the vote.
Point of information overrides that, point of information. So, will I be-
Roberts rules, correct?
Point-
Point of order or point of?
Point of information.
Go ahead.
So, point of information, I would like to know if this is it, or if I'll be provided any sort of evidence to back this up? Or if this is all I'm getting?
You're supposed to receive notice of the charges under 5.4, and then you can bring your defense, and you have the right to cross-examine any witnesses.
So this is, this, this resolution and this language here is, is it? There, there's not going to be any evidence given to me?
I don't know, Mike, I, I-
You don't know?
I don't know. No, I do not know. So if, if-
I mean, isn't your-
No, it's not my charges, Mike, they're not my, they're-
Right, but you're the city attorney, and I'm asking you, I mean, this is regarding our charter and our charter language.
I understand, I, Mike, so under 5.4, if you read the 5.4, it says that the, the charges are to be sent, are to be provided to you with 10 days lead time before any hearing.
Right.
The charges are to be delivered to you. So, at the hearing, Commissioner Bryson may introduce, I don't know, maybe he'll introduce the certified minutes from the, when you were gavelled out of order, I don't know. That, that could be evidence, and then you have a chance to cross-examine that evidence.
So the day of, you're-
I'm, I'm giving you a hypothetical, Mike, I'm not saying that's what's gonna happen, I'm just saying-
The day of, that's when I'm gonna be given the evidence against me?
A hearing is when one side brings, brings their case, and you refute the case. You have 10, you have 10 days notice of the, of the issues.
This is, this is a, this is a hearing so that I can be heard as a defense, right? Much in the same way that a court hearing would take place, just like the gentleman that defended Lisa Hendrick said at the last witch hunt we had.
And he got it all the day of the hearing. Understand? He got it all the day of the hearing.
But that's not proper, because you're supposed to have 10 days to prepare.
We're trying to, we're trying to follow the charter, Mike, the charter has specific language about giving you notice of the charges. That's what it says.
Okay, so, you're, my answer, the answer to my question-
The charter.
The answer to my question is I will not be provided any evidence whatsoever to prepare my defense against, that's, that's what we're saying here? Yeah, it's a hearing to, to remove me from office, it's a hearing where two sides present their case and are able to refute, or not refute, various things.
And you can bring witnesses, and you can bring, you can bring, prepare a cross-examination of any evidence that you think will be there, or you can cross-examine the chief.
Right, but how am I supposed to prepare a cross-examination when I don't even have the evidence to prepare on?
Well, Mike, I think you're, you're on fair notice of the issue with, with the property, you're on fair notice of three hearings or meetings where you were ruled out of order, that's four of the charges right there. You're on fair notice that the, the commissioners believe that you posted things on Facebook that were not, have, have been granted, um, non-privileged status.
And I did, the commissioners believe that, is that what they said?
That's what the charges say, I'm saying.
That, that I posted them, I'm pretty sure it says facilitate.
Facilit, what, I, I don't know.
Start it, do you have this in front of you, Bob, do you need a copy?
I don't need a copy, Mike, thank you, though, for the, and then you'll have a chance to cross-examine, um, the police chief.
So there'll be no evidence whatsoever provided to me, that's-
I don't know, Mike, it's not my hearing.
You're the lawyer.
Not according to you.
Hearing, and maybe the public has, where the defense has actually, like, issued to the prosecution all of their tactics and, uh-
You don't know nothing about discovery?
It's not a trial.
That's, that's what it is, it's a mini-trial, that's what it is. That's what he, that's what this is. That's what this is. And in fact, there's case law out there where this whole thing has been thrown out when the person hasn't been provided evidence beforehand.
What's the name of that case, Mike?
I can get it to you.
Okay, I look forward to it.
I can get it to you, it won't make a difference, but, I just, I, like I said, point of information, I would like to know if I will-
Are you gonna email me that case?
If I will be-
Are you gonna email me that case?
I mean, does it, I could, would it make a difference, though?
Yeah, because I could read it tonight when I get home.
I mean, it really wouldn't make any difference proceeding forward, but I can do that, definitely.
Alright.
But I still didn't really get an answer to my question. I mean, who's, this is the board that I'm gonna be in hearing in front of, so you guys should know if you're gonna provide evidence. Jake, will you be providing evidence?
Here, I think-
At this time, no.
I'm saying between now and the hearing, so I get 10 days to prepare, you introduce this resolution, right? This is, this is your name on it, are you gonna be providing evidence to back up these claims?
At the hearing, yes.
At the hearing?
As. Yes.
You, you are, just at the hearing, so, not even the night before, Lisa, at the hearing.
Mike, I understand, Mike-
No, you said the night before.
No, I got it at the hearing.
I understand, you're, you're, you're looking, I, I do have the document, by the way, in front of me.
Okay.
For the public's edification, it says that, um, "Removals by the commission shall be made only after a hearing of which such officer has been given notice by the clerk at least 10 days in advance, either personally or by delivering the same to the last known place of residence. Such notice shall include a copy of the charges against the officer." Just a copy of the charges.
Charges, sorry, go ahead.
The hearing shall afford an opportunity, so when the hearing comes, an opportunity to the officer in person or by an attorney to be heard in his defense, to cross-examine witnesses, and to present your testimony. That's the way it reads, we're, they're following the charter.
To be heard, right, to be heard in my defense.
Right.
But it's kind of hard to defend and prepare a defense when I don't even know what evidence is being used against me, right?
Mike-
I mean, that's, and, and, and for the public's benefit, I mean, in, in a typical trial, there's defense, there's prosecution, and then there's something called discovery, where the prosecution gives to the defense all the evidence they have against them, so they can prepare that defense. That's typically how it works, and that's, that's how it's gonna have to work if this ends up in circuit court, where there's gonna have to be evidence. I mean, you can't ju, this is like, you can't drop on somebody's lap, like, oh, here's the evidence, the day of the hearing, the whole point in the 10 days notice, so I can prepare my defense, you just read it.
That's what I got.
I've been to court-
And that's not proper.
I've been to court-
And I'm pretty sure your lawyer brought that up.
No, he didn't, he said that there was no rules in that, it was perfectly all legit, I hate to tell you.
It was, does it sound legit, though? Does it really sound legit?
This isn't an actual court thing, so, unfortunately, all I'm telling you is, I used legal, I know what I was told, okay? And I had to deal with it, in fact, you're getting actually more time than I ever got, I got 10 days from the notice to there. I didn't even get a motion, and I didn't get a resolution, and I didn't get any of that stuff, so, you're getting a lot more than I was allowed to, but-
Well, I've no, I've no, that's gonna happen since the trial.
But the problem is, this is the way it's set up, it's unfortunate, but it's set up that way, and-
It's unfortunate.
Well, it's-
It's unfortunate.
It's set up that way, I, I didn't write it.
Are you done?
Yeah.
I mean, I just wanted to make sure.
So, again, point of information, will you be providing evidence?
Tonight?
At the hearing.
At, at the hearing.
At the hearing, yes.
At the day of the hearing?
Yes.
Will you be providing evidence at the hearing?
Yeah, I go to court all the time with people, and we take our evidence to the court, and then he has a chance to repo, redo it. You, at the hearing, you have your chance.
Will, will you be providing evidence at the-
You're trying to have the hearing right now, you can't do that.
Nope, I'm asking for point of information.
No, you're trying to have the hearing right now.
I'm asking for point of information on a resolution that's in front of us.
I asked for the vote to be called.
Yes, and the point of information overrides that, so, point of information, will you be providing evidence at this hearing?
You've got the evidence.
Will you be providing evidence at this hearing, Mr. Clausen?
If I have to, I will, yes.
If?
Okay.
How about you, Brian, will you be providing evidence at this hearing?
Maybe.
Maybe?
Yeah, maybe.
Maybe, how about you, Jen, will you be providing evidence at this hearing?
I don't have evidence to provide at the hearing, I'm gonna hear the evidence.
Okay, so that's a no from you, a maybe from Brian. Lisa, how about you, will you be providing evidence at this hearing?
I don't have anything for you, but, again, I didn't get mine till the day of the hearing.
That really wasn't the question, so no, that's a no from you? Rita, will you be providing evidence?
You asked the question 10 times, and it's been answered 10 times, and I have nothing to say.
Along the line, point of information. Commissioner Rowrigg, will you be providing evidence prior to this hearing?
Okay.
Ask and answer, I didn't hear your answer.
That's my answer.
What was it?
Asked, you asked the question numerous times, it's been answered numerous times, we need to move on.
By, by you, though, I'm asking you.
And I gave you my answer, that's it.
What was it? I didn't hear it.
I'm not repeating myself again.
You said ask and answer, I'm just simply asking a yes or no question, will you be providing evidence?
And I answered your question.
Will you be providing evidence before the hearing?
No comment.
What's that?
No comment.
No comment. So I don't get my point of information honored.
Is there a motion, or, or, did we even make, I don't know if we made a motion. There's a motion and a support.
There's a motion, we were on discussion, he called, we called for the vote, he called point of information.
Yep, so for the public out there, you can see how much of a mess this is, just, nobody has any answers, nobody knows what they're doing, it's pretty obvious.
Alright, there's no more point of information, then how about the vote, it's been called?
Roll call vote, Madam Mayor. When you're ready?
Yeah.
Mr. Rourke?
Yes.
Mr. Ross?
Yes.
Mayor Vandabush?
Yes.
Mr. Bryson?
Yes.
Mr. Hendrick?
Yes.
Mr. Clausen?
Yes.
Motion carried.
We've set the date?
Oh. Yeah.
I believe the date should be set?
Yes.
Okay.
10 days is the 15th, that's a Sunday. So anything after that, I guess.
So 10 days is the, Sunday, the 15th, so, anytime then, Monday, the 16th or after? Is there? Monday- Monday, the 16th, is that?
I'm, I'm good with that. If anyone else have any issues with that date?
You got the time? Yeah, what time?
Monday, the 16th.
I'll make a motion, we hold the hearing on Monday, October 16th at 7:00 PM.
Okay, a motion and support?
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.
What was, what was the time, I'm sorry?
7:00 PM.
7:00 PM.
7:00. You give me one moment, Madam Mayor?
Yeah.
Who, who just signed that? Did you guys all just sign this? Did you guys all just sign this? Just now? When, when was, when was the yes votes? All you guys' names are written right here.
I just wrote them, Commissioner Hefron.
Okay.
During the discussion.
Okay.
All right, we're moving on now to item 11B, 135 North Sixth Street Site Restoration with Dominic Berlowski.
Hi, Dominic Berlowski, 50.
50, Blank Road, Marine City, Michigan. I have two issues. First issue, uh, I had a house at 135 North Sixth Street, which we all agreed to tear down, and I tore it down. I have a back lot at 135 North Sixth Street, and the building inspector took it upon himself to tell the DPW supervisor to go over there and cut the grass. I was gonna go there and cut the grass on that following Sunday, but he already went there and cut the grass, which he didn't have any right to cut the grass. The city commission passed an ordinance that for obnoxious weeds for, to give a letter of 15 days to cut the grass down, which I never received a letter, and the DPW feels that the commission not gonna tell him what to do, he's gonna do whatever he wants to do. Secondly, at 135 North Sixth Street, I had a house, we tore it down. We followed all the instructions, and the last meeting that I had with the city commission, I talked to Lisa Hendricks, and she asked me what all I had to do on that location to, uh, finish up the demolition. And I said I had to plant grass seed and straw. And, uh, sorry. And, uh, I told her I needed at least a week. Well, after we agreed to that, that I was gonna plant the grass seed and the straw with the city attorney...
Whoa, 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 wait. I think you confused me with, with the bill, 'cause I've never spoke to you about any of this.
You're gonna tell me you never talked to me on that commission meeting?
Oh, at the commission meeting, yeah. I thought you meant by telephone or...
No, I never talked to you, I never talked to him either.
Okay, gotcha.
I have no idea who the hell he is. Anyhow, uh, we agreed at that commission meeting that I plant the grass seed and plant the straw. And they asked how much time I needed, and we agreed, uh, till the end of the month, at which time it rained for three days in a row. We waited one day for it to dry up a little bit. My stepson and my son went over there and they planted 100 pounds of grass seed. I bought 200 pounds of grass seed, but I planted 100 pounds of grass seed and six bales of straw at the cost of $20 a bale. So I was keeping an eye on the property, that, uh, the grass would come up, and I found that, uh, there were a couple of locations where the rain had washed the grass seed away, and we agreed, my son and I and Joe, that we would go there Sunday and mow that new grass so that we wouldn't pull the grass seed up out of the ground and just cut the top off of it. Well, we went there on Sunday, and the neighbor met me outside and told me that the city came in there and dumped dirt and, uh, covered up all my grass, covered up all my straw. And not only that, they went to the back of that property and dug up the grass. I have no idea what they did or why they did that, but it had nothing to do where the location of the house was tore down. Now, I had planted grass seed there, I had put the straw down, and the grass was growing just fine. And we were gonna mow it that Sunday and found out that, again, the building inspector took it upon himself to send the DPW supervisor over there. Seems that he tells him what to do. And forget about what the commission said to me, that I had that time to plant the grass seed, and the grass was coming up, and I was gonna mow the grass. Well, when I went over there, the grass was all covered up, and my 100 pounds of grass seed was gone. And I was never notified, I was never talked to, I was never sent a letter, I was never sent any message that the building inspector or the DPW superintendent went over and did the work, what he did. And, uh, I received a bill from him on the first part where they mowed the grass on my second lot, and I thought about it, and I went and talked to an attorney, and he said that it looks to him like somebody has a heart on for you, his own words. And he said it would be better for me to just pay the bill. And maybe he'll get off your back if you do that. That was before he went over there and tore up all my grass. And I paid part of the payment, and when I found out that he put all this dirt on top of my grass seed and money that I paid and paid to have it spread, I saw red. So I'm here in front of you people to decide what should be done properly and what's right and what's wrong. I believe that if he didn't like the way I planted the grass seed, and it was there like three weeks, that I should have been notified that he was dissatisfied with that, or a phone call, or say something to me. I think that's his obligation as the DPW and the building inspector both. Neither one of them contacted me. So I believe that the commission here should make a decision as to what's right and what's wrong. And I feel that I'm being harassed, and I did everything that the commission wanted me to do on that property. The grass was coming up good, I put it up for sale with Mr. Bachelor. I contacted Bill Daniels to haul all the stone, all the rocks, all the bricks away, which he did, and I paid him a ton of money. So far, I have about $28,000 invested in a house that I no longer have and that I still owe $20,000 on. So I need some help, what's right and what's wrong, from you people. Thank you.
Any questions?
I wanna hear...
Mayor, uh, building official and the DPW superintendent are here. Maybe best to speak with the building official first. They can bring you up to the status. As many of you recall, this item was initially before the Dangerous Building Board, uh, with recommendation, and Mr. Berlowski, as he stated, was here, I believe, in May, uh, and addressed the commission, who gave an extension on some of the work. But I believe, uh, if it's the pleasure of the commission, uh, I've asked the building official to be here to further describe the site restoration work, uh, that had been undertaken.
Okay.
So let's go in now? I'm sorry, I...
The, the building official and the DPW supervisor are also gonna provide some information, too.
Sir, sit closer if you wanna listen. Tracy, Jeff, you can...
Well, thank you, uh, Madam Mayor, for the opportunity to speak. So first of all, I do a little housekeeping. Um, I'd like to thank everyone that stood for the pledge of allegiance, with the exception of the person who's no longer here. It's, uh, very little effort on our part to render, uh, respect to all of our veterans that are here. Uh, Commissioner Clausen, I think you were in the Navy, correct?
Yes.
Mr. Moran, Mr. Posey, and Attorney Davis, I believe, was also in the service, so thank you for that.
Navy's part of the Coast Guard, right, Bill?
Yeah, it's... Don't, don't get too far from the coast. So anyway, Mr. Berlowski did apply for a permit after months haranguing from my office to try and get him to do the right thing, and it was issued April 6th of 2023. And he, um, was in a holding status for quite a while because he would not provide liability insurance, which Commissioner Clausen can testify to. When we're doing a demo project, we'd like demolition, we'd like liability insurance in case the excavator gets out of control and knocks the adjacent homes down. So it's currently in a, in an expired status.
You got permission for the insurance, right?
We did, eventually, after, okay.
Well, that was after, and I got ready to tear all the stones.
All right, so, and then, Mr. Berlowski's, um, as for, um, information that it's two separate lots is incorrect. That lot is all one parcel. I just took this off of GIS an hour ago. It goes from Sixth Street all the way to what should have been Seventh Street, I believe. So any site restoration would have been, would have fallen underneath the, uh, the permit number, 230015. Mr. Berlowski paid for an application fee of $75, an open hole inspection, which was never called in. I took it upon myself to stop there several times. I kinda made it my route on the way into work, stopped there every morning to see if he was ready for an open hole inspection. The concrete foundation sat between the city sidewalk and the city curb for months on end. I finally saw a bunch of backfill. I'm not sure what you call it. It looked more like asphalt grindings, to me, millings, than it was sand, which is required by the code for backfill material. And it was haphazardly pushed into the holes that were vacated by the foundation, and I never seen a bit of topsoil come in and top-dress. So Mr. Berlowski took it upon himself to spread grass seed on top of these gravel asphalt millings, if you will. And we all know we had a wet season, and lo and behold, it was growing, but it was not a mowable surface.
That's your opinion?
Part, part of lot restoration on demo work, it has to be a mowable surface in case DPW has to go out there and mow it with their zero turn. If he had to have gone out there, it would have been, uh, he would have had to send his guys out there with weed whackers because a mower would have gotten stuck on the mounds that were left. So he never called for an open hole, I did it on my own, and a, a final inspection was never called for because, in my estimation, it wasn't ready. So, and I do not have it in for Mr. Berlowski. I have the utmost respect for everyone in the military, especially the Navy. All my kids and my nephews and nieces are all in the Navy, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mayor Commission? My office was notified by the building department that it was not brought up to the standards that were required, so I sent crews out there on two occasions. The first time, there was long grass in the rear of the property, there was mounds of brush, uh, on the property that concerned the neighbors because of rodents and stuff like that. There was a slab of cement. So what we did is we took care of all that and, uh, graded the property the best we could with what material was available there. And, uh, like, like, was brought up the, um, when we went back out there, and it was brought to our attention that it really wasn't topsoil out there, and it, and it did look like some sort of gravel. There was grass that was starting to grow, it wasn't brought up to grade. And as you know, you get grass that can grow in the cracks of the sidewalk, doesn't make it a lawn. So it, it was definitely a blight situation. We went out there a second time, removed some remaining cement, a stump that was out there, and then we brought in some topsoil to try and bring it up to grade so we could replant seed. However, the rest of it, we, we couldn't finish it because we had no more topsoil, uh, in the yard. So we had to get some more ordered. By the time that came in, everything was put on hold, uh, waiting the outcome of this meeting. So, that's all I have.
So I spoke with Mr. Berlowski last week, who came in. That's the reason why this item is on the agenda upon his request. I, I don't have the ability, as you know, to be able to waive, uh, any, any fees or costs which have been accumulated. I just wanna point out again, going back, Mr. Berlowski was here at the May 18th meeting and spoke at the meeting. The commission, uh, by action of the commissioner's direction, uh, at that time was to give an additional 21 days, uh, for restoration. And that date was given that, uh, you had until May, excuse me, until June 26th, 2023, to complete all the remaining restoration work. As Mr. Kelly has stated, that work was not completed, uh, per the requirements, and that's why the DPW commenced their work. Uh, again, the commission's direction was given. A certified letter was sent to Mr. Berlowski dated June 16th and received certified, uh, signed for on June 20th. That again indicated the 21-day extension and final work to be completed by June 26th, 2023. Also stated that the, uh, the work included complete removal of any building materials and replacement of topsoil and seed where structure had been located. Failure to complete this work with the date stated above, uh, City of Marine City, their designated contractor, will complete the site restoration work, and you will be billed for such services. If the bill should go unpaid, the cost of services will be placed on property taxes for reimbursement. And again, and indicating also, please contact the building official, uh, with, or myself, and the phone number. So, again, I don't believe there was any contact that, that took place, uh, after this letter. DPW was then contacted by the building official, began the site restoration work. But again, my conversation with Mr. Berlowski last week, uh, was to ask for these fees to be waived, and again, I placed the site in on. I cannot make that decision or determination, but I believe you have all of the history that's provided from all parties, uh, as to where we are today.
Yep. Yep, if you can go back up to the podium, yep.
I have been in this town for 35 years, and I've seen a lot of things take place and a lot of things that didn't take place. I believe that the city of Marine City is, is growing, and that the people that they hire are not the best people with the best interest of Marine City. This building inspector that we have here today has tore down a number of buildings, had buildings tore down in Marine City, where we have lost a tremendous amount of tax payout. My tax is a loner, between $8,000 and $10,000, just on my house that was tore down that the city no longer receives. There's a house on Bruce Street that was tore down that needed some tender loving care. It was also tore down by the building inspector, saying that it, it, because the house didn't conform to the city regulations. I don't believe that the DPW supervisor is telling the truth on moving debris from my location. I hired Bill Daniels, and I'm sure most of you people know Bill Daniels, and I can get him down here or get him to testify and write a letter to you guys stating that I paid him to pick up all the rocks, all of debris from the demolition on that house, which he said he'd done. So where this man says that he went in there with the DPW and picked up... So, where this man says that he went in there with the DPW and picked up concrete, I have no idea. Now, I don't believe that he has the right, this is America still, this is my property, and I don't really care that he says that he has the right to come on my property if he feels that the land that I filled in, and by the way, Grosso brought the topsoil, and I have a bill at home from him that brought topsoil and dumped it in that hole, that that land was level, and we planted grass seed, and if he thought that that was not done, the least he could have done, I pay his damn wages with our taxes. I pay this DPW's wages. And I've been in this town for a long, long time, and I would not do anything to jeopardize the city. And I don't feel that these people are doing their jobs, especially the building inspector. Now, I hate to point fingers, but we have a shop at the KFC, or at the old Kmart store that's running a bump and paint shop over there, painting without any kind of special equipment for painting to absorb the smell. You drive by there, he's got the doors half open, and you drive by there, and you can smell the paint fumes. Now, the DPW says that he makes a tour through the city. Why hasn't he done anything about that if he's so popular with running around? I know that he's been by my place, he's been by there every day, according to the neighbor next door, that he stops and looks. Now, if he doesn't have anything else to do but to drive by my property, that I feel that I did exactly what the City Commission told me to do. Level the ground, plant the grass seed, put straw on it. And that's what I did at the last meeting. Now, because he come by and says, "Oh, I don't like that. I'm gonna put some more dirt in there." Well, I went by his place when he went by there and put his big tractor and dug holes in my ground, and there was a great big puddle of water over there. But I didn't say, "Hey, I'm gonna go over there and put some more dirt in that hole and charge the city for it." I went over there, scraped some dirt that, where his tractor had made a big rut in it, and filled that hole in, and planted my grass seed, and planted my straw. Now, I spent a whole lot of money doing what the city said to do. And this man, I, like I said, I don't believe he does his job properly, to come out there every day and tell me that I'm not doing my job, and that I can't do anything on my property. And the City Commission, he's telling you, "I don't care what you say, I'm gonna go do whatever hell I want to do." And I don't believe I should have to pay for what he did on that property. Although, I paid part of it, because I thought that if I paid it, I wouldn't have any more problems. I wouldn't have to go get an attorney and sue the city and get all the information, get all the videos and everything else, and cost a whole ton of money for something that is so stupid as a mud puddle on my property. Thank you. Yes.
Did anybody take pictures?
I didn't.
I mean, almost everybody has cell phones. Well, I don't see any evidence, so...
Well, I'm an old man, and we didn't have cameras, and we didn't have on our phones back then, and I still don't have one.
Does anybody have pictures?
Like that, so, if anybody had them, it would be him.
City have initial pictures of the demolition? And also keep in mind, Commissioners, this was initiated through the Dangerous Building Board, like some time ago. But do you have initial pictures of the demo piece out there?
You have to look at BSNA, see if I've attached them. But I know there's multiple pictures, and the adjacent neighbor to the south has taken photographs of before and after.
Did he take any pictures that you tore up his grass this time, when your guys went over there?
Yes.
Did he?
I'd like to have that.
Did you? Did you take any pictures of the grass that you tore up?
Mr. Brolowski?
On his property?
Please address us about your property, please.
Commissioners, again, the question is before you, if you wish to have any variation of the fees or move forward on this. I believe Mr. Schmidt had stated, the portion of the back, they had to get additional topsoil to fill in that portion. According to the Dangerous Building Code, it was follow-through under the direction of the building official. Additional time period was granted by the Commission. Additional work was done. It's at the pleasure of the Commission of how you wish to handle it. There has been an invoice, Mr. Brolowski stated, that was sent, I believe $743. Partial payment was made on that, and I believe there is a second invoice yet to go out for the additional topsoil and work that was completed. Approximately $900, I believe.
So do you know exactly how much he stole?
Yeah.
Yeah, I believe, I believe there's only a couple, Mr. Brolowski, only $200 or $250, you recall what you paid? I don't have that document in front of me, of the 743.
What I paid, I paid $400.
Okay, so there may be $200 or $300 balance on that first?
Yeah, there's $350 or something left on that first charge.
And the second invoice has not gone out. Those charges are for equipment, manpower, and materials.
And how much was that one?
About 900 on the second one. That has not been sent. Again, after speaking with Mr. Brolowski, we put a hold on everything until he could come and speak with the Commission. It's about $1,200.
Yeah.
Balance, yeah, about $1,200 remaining.
Would it be more beneficial that we allow you to sit down with Mr. Brolowski to try to work out any of this issue?
I'm willing to do that. I just caution that, and again, I think where we do have flexibility, material costs are material costs, we've had to pay those. We may have flexibility on manpower costs, because that was done during regular work hours, did not incur any overtime, so that certainly has flexibility. And there is likely, again, we'd have to look at the material cost of the equipment, fuel costs, those things that might not be able to be waived. But I'd be willing to meet with them to try to find a middle ground. I'm not sure we may get there, but we had a good conversation, and we're willing to, I'm willing to meet with you again.
Didn't he just say that the dirt that he put on there was dirt that was on the city property from someplace else?
Well, we still have to pay for that dirt.
He didn't get any dirt.
He had to get...
He didn't buy the dirt.
Well, the city still had to buy that dirt that he used.
No.
Yeah.
Yeah, it was just brought to a site and stored. I mean, we had to purchase the topsoil. But we, they just stored it at the DPW yard.
But would you be willing to work, sit down with our city manager and...
Yeah, I'll work something out with him.
Would that be...
What I want is this man off my back. You know, you people sitting here are honest, I believe. Now, don't you think that if I was the superintendent of an organization, and I have been plenty of times where everything doesn't go exactly how you plan it, but you give a man the right to take care of that situation? You call him and you tell him, "Hey, I've never talked to this man, referenced this demolition." Not once, except for when I went in to fill out the application. He told me I owed him $175. Now, I don't feel that I did anything wrong. I feel that I did exactly what you people asked me to do. I planted the grass seed, I planted the straw. And because he didn't like the way I did it, the dirt that I held in there was dirt. It had rocks in it, but it was topsoil dirt. And the grass was just growing beautiful, and we were gonna mow it that Sunday. And had I been able to mow that grass, he would never know that there was a house standing there. So I don't feel I should have to pay for what he thought, again, what he thought was wrong. And I think he should have called me, sent me a letter, say, "Hey, you gotta put some more dirt in there." Now, that's what we pay, that's what we pay his salary for. That's what I pay his salary for, in my taxes that I pay you people.
But you did get the, you got this letter too, where they wanted to do it by June 26?
I don't receive, I don't believe that I received any letter after we talked at the Commission meeting.
It was signed.
And I don't know the dates of any of that stuff.
It was signed for Mr. Brolowski, at least with your name, June 20th, delivered to 5850 Plank.
Do you want me to check with the post office?
I have, I'll give you a copy. I have a copy certified.
I didn't sign nothing.
Yeah.
The signature's on there.
D. Brolowski. I mean, again, I'll give you a copy of this.
I didn't sign for anything.
Yeah, that's the certified mail.
That's not my signature, it's printed.
Yep, up top, should be the signature.
Yeah, it's, that's not my signature.
I mean, again, they deliver it, somebody signed for it at the property. I don't...
I don't, again, I don't think I saw the letter. If I did, I don't remember it.
I'll give you an additional copy of everything.
Well, we'll sit down and look.
Sure.
If that's what the Commission wants us.
Thank you.
I'd like that. I think if you guys both want to work that out.
Thank you.
One last thing, please, before you render a decision, or, the site's still not put back the way it's supposed to be. So, keep that in mind. It may stink me if I'm wrong, is it a mowable surface at this point in time?
It is not.
Thank you.
It is not. I planted another 100 pounds of grass seed and six bales of straw over there.
Okay, so...
Can you make sure you take pictures of...
Yeah.
I was just going to recommend that we'll get an update with photos, to be able to have prior to the meeting, and be able to share that too.
Thank you.
And, Mr. Brolowski, we'll talk afterwards about...
You know, you guys are pushing me so hard. You're forcing me to go and hire an attorney and bring us all into certain discharges and a lot of unnecessary money.
Well, we're trying to, we're trying to set it up so you can work this with a city manager.
I appreciate it.
Okay.
Madam Mayor, if the Commission still agrees, I'd just like to ask if you would consider a motion to allow me the authority to work with Mr. Brolowski in an effort to settle and resolve this issue.
Yes, I'll make that motion.
Support.
Okay, motion of support, and...
And then, whatever you work out, you're gonna bring us back.
And I will also meet with our building official and DPW director and request photos be taken.
Nice.
Your permission for them to take photos of the site tomorrow, if Mr. Schmidt or you available tomorrow, if the weather allows, to take some photos.
It's supposed to rain.
To take photos of the property. The Commission has asked for photos.
We might open the eye.
Yeah.
Take pictures of the property.
Yeah, if you could, Mr. Schmidt, do that. Thank you.
While we're here, can you tell me or ask him why he went off of where the house was tore down and raped up and demolished all that property?
I can answer that for you based on the question that I asked. It's all one parcel, so the cleanup was the entire...
No, no, this has nothing to do with the back part of the property. This is on 135 North Sixth Street. This is behind where the house was located.
Yes.
To the right, he tore a big patch of dirt off there.
On your property?
On my property.
Yeah, it's all one parcel, though?
Yes, it's all one, it's on 135 North Sixth Street.
And I believe that is where debris was picked up, from the back.
There was a slab of cement that was removed back there.
There wasn't no, that had nothing to do with the demolition of the property.
Well, the order was for the entire site to be cleared on the demolition. So that's why that was taken care of. But we can, we can address that when we, when we meet.
We're in the discussion phase. If there is any other discussion. Yeah, just being the centrist, and Scott, I know you got a good head on your shoulders, I'm hoping that we can come to some amicable resolution here. I know these things are never easy, and I appreciate everybody's work on it. I don't want to belittle the fact that I'm sure this was all hard for all parties, so I'm not taking sides here, but in any case, yeah, I'd like to grant you that opportunity, Scott.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carries? And moving on to 12 is new business on action items, 12A, ordinance 23005, adult use marijuana first reading. Can I have a motion to approve the first reading of ordinance 23-005 and ordinance of the City of Marine City, St. Clair County, Michigan, to establish adult use marijuana facilities, Title 15, Chapter 160, Section 238, entitled Adult Use Marijuana Facilities?
I'll make the motion. You want me to read all that again? The motion for the first reading of ordinance of the City of Marine City, St. Clair County, Michigan, to establish adult use marijuana facilities, Title 15, Chapter 160, Section 238, entitled Adult Use Marijuana Facilities.
Point of information. Bob, is it proper to have a previous motion that was already passed and not rescinded, and then proceed to write a ordinance without another motion even taking place?
Mike, my understanding, that motion was to, was for me to look at option number three in my memo, which was the option involving a potential ballot initiative to be made by the Commission, which I determined was not lawful. And so the Commission moved on to doing what we thought.
Well, I'm sorry to interrupt, but you're not really answering my question. Is it proper to have a previously passed motion not rescinded, and then proceed to write a ordinance without a motion taking place?
The motion that you're talking about doesn't need to be rescinded because this is not contrary to that motion.
That, it's not contrary to it?
That motion was to, you know, you didn't hear my full explanation, the meeting that you were not at.
Yeah, would you, would you please give that explanation?
No.
Okay.
I'm not gonna give the whole one.
Oh, make me stomach up what was, what was the gist of it?
So, so I had, I had two memos, and the second memo, Mike, gave you, it gave you three options. One was to do nothing because you already have an ordinance in place that prohibits all of these facilities. Number two...
Which memo are we talking about? The September 1st one right now? I just want to...
I think it might have been February.
Okay, so, okay.
Yep. And then there was the option of, of doing your own ordinance, and then there was the option of exploring the initiative, which I specifically said I think will be difficult. I got back to you in September and said that option is not gonna work, so I think that's...
Why, again, didn't that option work?
Because the, the, if you read the lengthy memo, the law does not permit...
Yeah, I got it, which, I got the memo in front of me, which, which law doesn't permit specifically?
Mike, I don't, I don't have the memo sitting here, I didn't think this was an issue, but my September memo laid out from the Michigan Constitution on down to your charter, that there was no authority for a ballot initiative to be initiated by the Commission. All the authority in the world for it to be initiated by the citizens.
And what, where, how, where did you come to that conclusion? It was from our charter?
And from the, and from the Constitution, which leads you to your city charter.
So, according to the charter, we can't...
The charter has no, you have no authority in your charter for the Commission to do a ballot initiative?
For the Commission to submit to the electorate any sort of question.
A ballot initiative, right.
Okay, so, I'm a little confused because Section 7.14, which you didn't reference in your September 1st memo, are you familiar with 7.14?
I don't have it in front of me, Mike.
Okay, I do. So, in 7.14, it says, "An ordinance adopted by the electorate through initiating, initiatory proceedings may not be amended or repealed by the Commission for a period of one year after the date of the election of which it was adopted. And an ordinance repealed by the electorate may not be reenacted by the Commission for a period of two years after the date of election at which it was repealed. It is provided, however, that any ordinance may be adopted, amended, or repealed at any time by appropriate referendary or initiatory procedure in accordance with foregoing provisions of this charter, or, if, and this is the important part, if submitted to the electorate by the Commission in its own motion."
Right. That doesn't say what you think it says.
So, okay, so if I'm not understanding, what does this mean? If submitted to the electorate by the Commission on its own motion, which is exactly what I thought we did, we submitted a motion to submit this to the electorate and have them vote on it, and that's pretty much...
I, Mike, I read the motion was that you, and you asked me to look into option number three from my... I, I, Mike, I read the motion was that you and, you asked me to look into option number three from my February memo. I gave you an opinion that I didn't think option number three worked. And so the commission moved on and said, well, let's pursue option number two, which is an ordinance.
I'm specifically talking about this right here. You said it's not in our charter that we could submit things to the electorate, but Section 7.14.
If you read that from the beginning, Mike, it talks about when there's a ballot initiative from the public, that this commission can't override their ruling for at least one year. I think that's what it says. Right? And then there's some procedures that we have to follow if we want to do that. But it starts with the premise that it's an initiative from the public. If I'm reading, if I, if I think I'm reading in my mind the section you're talking about.
You didn't, you didn't even include the section that I'm talking about.
Because I didn't think it was relevant.
Often. But can you explain to me what it means to be submitted to the electorate by the commission on its own motion if that doesn't mean exactly what we did?
So I will, I will research it, Mike, and I will issue a written opinion and, and get it out there for you.
I mean, this, this is, I mean, I'm reading it to you right now.
Well, I'm not gonna give you an opinion right now.
So this is the, I'm laughing because.
You're asking.
Every time there's a question.
You're asking me a question that I think I'll answer it like I answer your other questions. I'll, I'll research and give you the appropriate answer.
How do you, how do you interpret that, that last part? Submitted to the electorate by the commission on its own motion?
Mike.
That's what, but now you, you want to like do research and, and do things behind closed doors and, and emails instead of talking to the public.
I usually shut my door when I do my research. You're right.
Which is a problem for, for the public because you went to that podium up there and you said that option number three wasn't possible. And then you asked this commission to submit to you comments on how they wanted the ordinance written.
No.
That's.
Mike, I asked for clarification of the motion because I wanted to make sure I gave the right opinion. I want to make sure I understood the motion and I wanted clarification of the motion.
The motion I made?
Because I didn't understand when you had that tag along language that said.
No, no, no.
And maybe created, hang on, and maybe create a special district, right? I wanted to make sure I understood your motion at all.
We're not even on the same point. I'm talking about when you went to the podium in September, the first meeting in September, and told us that option number three was impossible. That's.
I legally recommended against option number, yes.
Yeah, and then you stood at the podium and recommended, I believe it was option number two, and then you asked the commission to submit to you their comments on how they wanted the ordinance written. Is that, isn't that correct? Isn't that how that went?
I don't know.
Does anybody remember?
I'm sure I asked for your input on how you wanted the ordinance structured.
But shouldn't that input on what a ordinance goes into, an ordinance be in public? I mean, that's why these meetings are public. They shouldn't be submitted to the lawyers and emails.
I've drafted the ordinance four times based on comments.
Right, but what I'm saying is.
And it's been in the public agenda four times, Mike.
But there was no discussion.
I asked everybody for their comment. I asked for your comment.
Submit to you the comments, which nobody, we never even had a discussion on writing this ordinance. When did we, when did we discuss anything about how this ordinance is written right now?
You could have discussed it anytime we brought it up.
When did, when did, when did you bring it up?
We just said it at the last meeting.
The last meeting when you set it aside?
No, we didn't set it aside.
Yeah, you did. Right away. Right when it came up. Right, right when it came up, the discussion, you made a motion to set it aside.
No, I didn't.
Yes, you did, Lisa. Immediately said, "I want to set aside the first reading of this ordinance until the next meeting." That's exactly what she said. Before I even had anything to say about it. And there was never.
That was just a motion, Mike. Then you could have talked about it right after that.
It was a motion to set aside an ordinance that had already been.
Motion to put this on the next agenda for a first reading.
No, 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 no. It was a motion to set aside.
No, it wasn't.
That's exactly what you said.
No.
Yes.
Not according to the minutes, the minutes state.
Okay.
By Commissioner Hendrick, seconded by Commissioner Bryson, to set the current version for the first reading for the next meeting.
Set aside is what you said.
No, it says set the current version for first reading.
So, my point being, there was never even discussion on how we were gonna write this. Like, this has, this has.
This is your opportunity.
This is, this is the time to discuss.
No, this is the first reading.
Yeah.
This is the first, we're supposed to have to have a discussion on how we're gonna craft it, and that discussion never took place. Because Bob went to the podium and asked for emailed comments and input from this commission instead of having an open discussion about it, and that is entirely improper. Entirely.
To all those people that got up and talked at every meeting about this, they didn't have any, any say in it. They've been talking about it for months. They get up and talk at public comment.
What does the public's comment have to do with this commission's discussion on how this, how this ordinance was drafted? There wasn't even a motion made to draft an ordinance.
Mike, I gave the draft of this ordinance probably a year ago.
Was there a motion made for you to draft this ordinance?
There was, there was a motion to proceed with option number two, to work on option number two and present.
Where, when?
I don't know, Mike. I, I mean.
It wasn't, there was no motion made. You went up there to the podium, you asked for comments. Nobody made a motion to craft ordinance at all.
Talk about it, no.
Except we haven't approved the motion.
The whole impropriety of this entire process. One, Bob gets to the podium and says to submit comments to him essentially in private instead of an open discussion. Two, we didn't even rescind the previous motion.
Your motion?
And the, the, the things in here as far as being a thousand feet from literally everything? Bob, wasn't it your opinion that we shouldn't zone these out of existence? So what, what property does this leave left? What property, what property is left after, after, because there's also another thousand feet from any residential structure as well. Not just residential zones, but residential structures.
I have a point of order from the city manager.
You did have a motion that was put on the table. You did not garner that I, I'm aware of, a support.
Right.
Which were really premature in the lengthy discussion that we've had according to orders of procedure. That's all I'm saying.
Right. I'm still trying to get a point of information on how exactly we arrived to this ordinance. By asking Bob, when was, when were you directed by this commission to craft this ordinance?
What does that have to do with this motion?
I'm asking a point of information. When was Bob directed to craft this ordinance by this commission?
Until all of us have to go back and look.
Lisa, I'm asking Bob, Bob, when were you, when was the motion passed to craft this ordinance?
Mike, if you go back about six memos ago on this issue, when we first started talking.
I'm not talking six memo. When was the motion? It's a very basic question. I know you're a lawyer, Bob, and you like to talk in circles, but it's a very basic question. When was the motion made to craft?
Commissioner Hillfrank, if you ask the attorney a question, allow him to respond before you enter.
I just need to get an answer to it.
I don't, I don't know the date, Mike.
Was there a motion passed to craft this motion, to craft this ordinance?
My marching orders were to get an ordinance version.
Your marching orders? Was that a motion?
Can I, can I finish one sentence, Mike? Can I just finish?
I'm just asking a basic question.
Commissioner Hillfrank, let him respond.
I would love to if you'd answer my question.
But he can't when you keep talking. Yeah.
So, we had, we had three options, Mike, and I.
See, here you go. You're not answering the question. Did you get a motion to proceed with writing this ordinance?
You're gonna be out of order. Let him respond to your question.
I think this, this commission gave me direction to, I don't know if it was by emotion, but the direction was pursue option number two and let us see what an ordinance would look like. Here's the key, though, Mike. The ordinance had been drafted a long time ago. I gave you this ordinance a year ago. A year ago I gave you, and you said nothing about it a year ago, except.
A year ago? It was my understanding we put it on the ballot.
No. Mike, I gave examples of this ordinance.
Right.
Back when you first raised the marijuana discussion. I said, here's a, here's a form of an ordinance that could work in your community. And I'll go back and get those memos. They go back at least a year. And so when, when option number three was, in my opinion, determined not to be the way to proceed because I believe it's unlawful. It was my understanding the commission said, well, let's see what that ordinance would look like. It was already done. It's been done for a long time. And all I said was, you've had it for a long time. Give me your comments and I'll make changes if, if, whatever you guys want.
There you go. Those comments shouldn't be taking place over email. Those comments should be taking place in open.
But they, I bring them back to you. I, every time I get, I bring them back to the board.
When did you do that?
It's in front of you right now.
This is already done. It's being read.
Mike, we talked about it at meetings. What did we want? What kind of facilities did we want? What kind of.
What didn't you want?
What kind of things we didn't want. We talked at these meetings about that. You don't remember it. I'm sorry. Look it up.
There was never a motion made to craft this ordinance in the way that it was crafted, and there definitely was never discussion saying that it should be a thousand feet from any residential. Excuse me, I have the floor. And there was never any direction from this commission to put in this ordinance that it should be a thousand feet from any residential house.
Yeah, we did.
No? When?
Recently.
Residential zone?
You remember, don't you, Joe? We even sent it back to the planning commission.
Sent, who sent what back? And when did this discussion take place?
Probably because you, maybe it was when you weren't here. I don't know.
No, because I watched the meeting.
Okay.
I'll talk to you tomorrow.
We're, we're closed tomorrow, Monday morning.
Monday morning.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Moran, as Chair of the Planning Commission, do you believe you have information that could support the point of information that Commissioner Hillfrank's trying to make?
First of all. Could you say a short prayer? I have a migraine. Listen to this fool.
I got a migraine dealing with this impropriety?
Okay.
This commission, either by motion or by acclamation, directed our.
Acclamation.
Attorney, based on information that you gave him about changes you would like to see to come up with an ordinance. That ordinance is in front of you right now for discussion. Period. The setbacks listed in this draft ordinance was based on request from this commission to provide setbacks from 250 feet through 1,000 feet at 250 feet intervals from residences, churches, and so forth. It was further suggested, and I don't remember by whom, that we needed to include not just residential zoning, but actual physical residences. Because some residences were located within the I-1 zone. So that was added to what was put in this ordinance. Again, this is a draft. You can discuss it. You can tell you like it, you don't like it, but this bickering back and forth is despicable.
Yes.
And I'm looking at you. You're the one that's despicable.
Point of order.
I'll give you a point of order.
Point of order.
Are there any questions from the mayor?
What? Point of order? The gentleman's attacking me. Calling me a fool? I mean, come on. If we're gonna be fair.
If the shoe fits. Do you have any further questions?
I have no further questions for you, Mr. Moran.
I still didn't get an answer. Who, who, so.
I'll second the motion.
All right, so we have the motion, we have the second. Any further discussion?
So, point of information. Who, who made the request to include the thousand feet from any residential home structure?
I did. I made a motion on it.
You made a motion?
Yes, when they asked for the, what to put into that. A thousand feet is what the federal government recommends.
Though, when did, when did you make this motion? To include the 1,000 feet from any residential structure. When did you make that motion?
When, when, when you interrupted the meeting and left, then we continued on with it.
I watched, I watched the meeting. Bob went to the podium, said what he said, and that was it. Nobody made a motion.
I don't care why you're grandstanding.
I'm not grandstanding.
Yes.
I'm not grandstanding. I'm calling out truth. Nobody made a motion.
No, you're not.
All right, what is the new question? What is the new answer for the discussion? We keep going around, around the same questions. Does it have anything additional?
Okay, so that was my point of information. Who made the request to include 1,000 feet from the nearest line of residential structure?
I just answered.
That's, that's all I'm asking. What, how did this get crafted?
You got the answer. You got the answer you asked for.
But it's, it's not true.
I made a motion to, to have it 1,000 feet to me, the federal government. I don't know where you're getting your information.
Okay.
And who you're, who's backing.
I'll call for the question.
We have a call for the question and a support. Roll call vote, please.
Point of information.
No, the question overrides.
No, 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 no.
Wait, you're, you're only voting, you're only voting on call the question.
Okay, call the question.
Right, you vote on that separate.
Let's vote on call the question.
Call the question.
Mayor, did you support that?
No, Commissioner Ross did.
I just have a question. Where, where can these places be located?
Yes.
Mayor Vanabush.
Point of information.
Commissioner Bryson.
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick.
Yes.
Commissioner Hillfrank. Commissioner Hillfrank.
No.
Commissioner Hillfrank.
I just said no.
It's a call to the question.
Call the question.
Yes.
Commissioner Rory.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Point of order, override call to the question.
Original motion and support.
Point of information. So we had to just.
Roll call voted.
Now you go to the roll call vote on the original motion and support for the ordinance.
Commissioner Bryson.
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick.
Yes.
Commissioner Hillfrank. Commissioner Hill.
No, because what this does is it, excuse me, I'd like to qualify my vote. I have an option to do that.
Yes.
Commissioner Ross.
Yes.
Mayor Vanabush.
Yes.
Motion carries.
So, I will say no because there is literally, you guys, we said we couldn't zone them out of existence, right? So where else can they go?
Okay, we're moving on now. We just had our vote. 13A administrative report for the city attorney's report.
They actually do.
I have nothing.
No.
Nothing?
Yes, you don't.
We do.
13B for the city manager report.
Just want to remind the commissioners and the public again, reiterate, when Mr. Moran, Chairman Moran, had stated, we have our planning.
You're the joke.
We have our master plan, we have our master plan and recreation plan, open house Tuesday, October 10th, from 4:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. It is at the municipal offices, open to the public. As Chairman Moran had stated, please, we need your input. We want your input. If you can attend, you can drop in at any point. Spend a few minutes, spend an hour, spend four hours. If you are not able to attend, we do have available on a flyer that's on the door on our city website, or you can email me of a QR code to participate in the survey. Very important that we get your input. And if you're not able to attend, again, you can please email comments to me, citymanager@cityofmarinacity.gov, and those will be passed on to the planning consultant and the planning commission. Rosalie, thank you for offering to bring your snacks and healthy goodies to that event. I'm sure they'll be delectable. Save us, save Joe and I a snack, please. And then the last item that I have is I will speak with the police chief in regards to the traffic concerns that were raised on South Main Street, and we'll discuss this. If any action would be taken, it would be a traffic order that would come in front of the commission, but we'll have some discussion on that. Thank you for bringing it to our attention. That's all I have. Thank you very much.
Thank you. 13C, any reports from department heads? All right, so we're to Commissioner Privilege and Liaison reports, and we'll start with Commissioner Claussen.
We have a planning commission meeting to discuss the condos. Anybody willing to attend that, they can attend, and it's on the Monday, so. Then, I, I guess I'm just tired of all this bickering going on and. Then, I, I guess I'm just tired of all this bickering going on, and I don't believe that one of our commissioners is an attorney and reading his interpretation of the ordinance. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Bryson?
I have nothing tonight, thank you.
Commissioner Hillfrank?
All right. Since this is most likely my, my last meeting, I just want to apologize to the public out there for the way these meetings have gone. Obviously, I would like to see them go better. Obviously, I would like to see less conflict, less bickering. But unfortunately, I have been attacked and disrespected relentlessly for simply trying to ask questions, simply trying to represent the public as best as I can in what the public's desires were with various issues. This marijuana dispensary issue, the majority of this city absolutely would support a vote if this commission would have allowed it to go to a vote. But again, we have agendas that are, in my opinion, taking place behind closed doors, agendas that aren't being shared with the public, and, and attorney opinions written to cover those agendas. The fact that Mr. Davis down there didn't even include Section 7.14 when he made his opinion in September, that we couldn't put it on the ballot, when it says specifically right here, or if submitted to the electorate by the commission on its own motion, that we can submit things to the electorate. But was Section 7.14 included in his opinion? No. We're told that we can't submit anything to the electorate, even though it says it right here. And in response to, to Rudy's comments up there, yeah, yeah, I am defiant. Yeah, I, I do resist the lying that happens up here, the misleading the public that happens up here. And I do get defiant when, I mean, just the list of attacks that have been directed towards me, I have a half a page here. I was attacked and shamed in a closed session for simply asking questions at a meeting. I've been written tickets using state law misdemeanors instead of city ordinances, where it's very specific that it should be a civil infraction for a simple dog off a leash. I've had a felony investigation initiated against me over what was simply an inter-office miscommunication. Was there any felony investigations done over the personnel investigation? Of course not. We have letters being redacted, sent off to the, to the background check company without a motion of the, of the commission. We have a commissioner up here denying that that took place, denying that that was legal or illegal. I've been arrested and removed from the board I was elected to by the voters for simply trying to exercise my First Amendment rights as a private citizen, as a person, because that is how the OMA Act is written. A person is allowed to address a board. Last time I'm checked, I'm still a person, whether I'm elected or not. And now this city is gonna have to. And that ticket I was written as I was arrested was quickly dismissed by this city's attorney. And in that dismissal, it says, oh, so the county can pick it up. Did the county pick it up? Nope. They didn't. Just like the county prosecutor refused to prosecute me for the felony investigation that was initiated by Mr. Bell down there and signed by the city manager. Also, no charges. And this is all for me simply trying to do my best to promote transparency, to promote accountability, when there was none. And we still have a huge, huge problem with transparency when we have a city attorney sitting at that podium saying, for the commission to submit comments to him on how an ordinance should be written when these discussions should be taking place in public. That is why there's the Open Meetings Act. That's why we're all sitting at this board table. That's why we have an audience here. That's why this is being recorded, because these discussions should be taking place in public, not through email. There's been so many things. I've been blamed for not following the process. There's been so much not followed. There was never no motion made to craft this ordinance. There was never no mo, Bill just claimed he made a motion, that never took place. I've watched the meetings. I welcome any one of you to do so as well. It's just consistent lying and covering of each other's butts all the time, simply for somebody trying to do the job they were elected to do. And that's ridiculous. That's ridiculous. Instead of putting through this list of kangaroo court charges, why don't we put that on the ballot? See what the people think about it? Because I can assure this board, if you put that resolution on a ballot, this city wouldn't remove me, because I'm the only one up here acting as a watchdog for this community. Everybody else is just going along to get along. I mean, Lisa, you used to ask all the hard questions, used to, to, to do, follow the process and, and be that watchdog. Who is going to do that now? When I'm gone? And that's my ultimate apology to this city, is that from here on out, there's not gonna be any tough questions asked, there's not gonna be any accountability asked for. And it sure doesn't seem like there's gonna be any transparency. And in my opinion, so let's look at this map here. So this is, these are the maps that, that were made by the, Mr. Moran there. And, you know, you had even made a comment at the podium at one meeting that we should zone them out of existence. And then the attorney actually said, well, I wouldn't use that wording, because it probably wasn't too smart. Where are these, where are they gonna go with all these rules? Because it's not on Eldra Street, because there's a house there now, right? So where are they gonna be able to go? And in my opinion, because every, people who are on board with it being put on the ballot, people are on board with it, us having a town hall, why'd we go through all that if we were just gonna zone these out of existence? What changed between the time of that town hall and Mr. Davis's opinion in February versus Mr. Davis's opinion in September? What changed? Does it have something to do with these apartment developers? Is it, is it have something to do with them possibly not wanting a dispensary closely located to the, those apartments? Because I, for one, have real hard time understanding how we went through this whole process and the conversations that I had with Mr. Davis in the office with Jim when he was city manager regarding the businesses that were actually interested to come here. Mr. Davis even said jars. He had spoken with or been in contact through a third party, I don't know, but he said jars was willing to be located here. These were conversations that took place. But then all of a sudden, all these opinions start coming out that say everything that we're doing is improper. Shutting down the whole thing, shutting down $50,000 a year per dispensary in tax revenue, shutting down the addition of storefronts, filling up some businesses. Literally, every voter concern from November has been disrespected. The filling of business fronts, the transparency. It's gross. It really is. And, yeah, for the people out there, no worries. I'll still be asking the tough questions. Not going anywhere.
All right. Commissioner Ross?
Okay. Number one, good luck Mariner football tomorrow.
Yes.
Team's been doing great, really had a great defensive stand last couple of games, and offense is doing well, too, but keep up the great work and trust the system. You've got a great set of coaches. Like to make special mention and give our thoughts and prayers to the De Giuseppe family. Luanne De Giuseppe, who's a valued member of this community and mother to one of our workers past, a couple weeks ago. I should have made mention of it at the last meeting, but just a great lady and family friend to many, many of us around here. That is all for this week. Thank you.
Commissioner Rory?
I'd just like to say, since we've been accused of lack of transparency, lying, conspiracy theories, and all that, that I'm just waiting for the Italian laser coming down and getting us. I guess that's the next thing. After that, I'd just like to say, we had this nice flyer, the City of Marine City, it's not a city-sponsored event, but Halloween's coming up, and there, Tuesday, October 31st, from 5:00 to 8:00 p.m. is the recommended time for trick-or-treating. I'm sure everybody's looking forward to that, and let's hope it's not raining. That's all I got to say.
Thank you. Commissioner Hendrick?
All right. Old News Boys is starting up. We're gonna have our first meeting on October 11th, so if anybody would like to join, help out, you can always do it. It's always at the Fire Hall, 7:00 o'clock. It'll be on October 11th. We'll have a craft show still this year. It's gonna be coming up December 9th. It's gonna be out at the Perch Point Conservation Club this year. The Santa Parade will be the Tuesday before Thanksgiving, like always, so we want to see everybody out for the parade. That's always a great, great evening for all the kids. We will be also doing Old News Boys paper sales. That'll be the Merry Time Christmas weekend of December 1st and 2nd. Always watch out for our people out there trying to hawk the papers, but it's all of our fundraising for the kids. And we're also selling tickets this year. We have raffle tickets, if you need them. Any Old News Boy has them, I have them. We have a first prize, we have an e-bike for the first prize, which is really a nice deal. We have a Blackstone Grill second prize and $200 cash for third, and this will be drawn at the December 9th craft show. But if you want tickets, they're $10 each, or three for 20. It's a good cause, and it helps us provide Christmas to all the kids here. We provide clothes, toys, candy, fruit to a huge amount of kids in this area. I think last year we did about 250. So, but it takes a lot to get these kids clothes and underwear and socks and all the stuff that we give them, plus toys. And toy boxes will be going out pretty soon also, so at a lot of the different businesses, you can put toys in there for the kids, and we collect them all. It's just a great cause for it, so if anybody needs anything, let me know. And if you need any tickets, I got them. That's all I got.
Thank you. Just a couple quick things. Had our CED meeting on September 27th. I believe we had a great meeting. Talked about redevelopment ready and best practices with city manager, talked about business attraction retention strategies, had information from Christie Jones, talked about several other things, a lot of good ideas, a lot of good things are coming down. And then, thank you to Rosalie for offering to bring things to the master plan and rec plan meeting Tuesday night. And then also a reminder to everybody, there's still an opening on the planning commission, so please, if you've got the time, if you could please apply for that. I believe maybe the next meeting or so, we'll be looking to make that appointment based on the application, so please apply if you're interested as soon as possible. And I think that's all I have. So we'll move on to the adjournment.
I'll make a motion.
Motion to adjourn.
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.